By reviewing, remembering Moses has died, Joshua has been appointed as replacement. Remember back in Deuteronomy, chapter thirty-four, verse nine, Moses had written, Joshua, son of Nun, was full of the spirit of wisdom because Moses had laid hands on him, and the Israelites obeyed him, doing as the Lord had commanded Moses. So Joshua is his replacement. He is the lead, he is filled with the spirit and is now in the relationship of God and with people. The Israelites are on the plains of Jericho, across the Jordan, from the city of Jericho. In fact, then we're gonna talk about that, so you understand that the city people, what we're beginning at, they can see them. And the people of Jericho know they are there, who they are, and they're watching, so let's begin. Last week, we, we ended with, in class, the review from BibleProject.com to give you an overview. And I just highlighted on that, on your, on the overview sheet, where we're, what we're discussing tonight. We're not going all the way to six through twelve, we're just gonna go up to eight. I've included in here a map, just again, where, of the area that we're, the conquest of Canaan. And I included it within your handout and in this, this is a more detailed map of showing, with on the map of the beginning of entering to Jericho and continuing on to AI, et cetera. So we'll be following this, this, this battle, battle, battle plan as we go forward. So we're stepping on in, so let's begin. We begin at the very beginning of Joshua, after the death of Moses, the servant of the Lord, the Lord said to Joshua, son of Nun, Moses is aid, Moses, my servant, is dead. Now then, you and all these people are ready to cross the, the Jordan River into the land I'm about to give to them, to the Israelites. I will give you every place where you set foot, your foot, where you set your foot, as I promised Moses. Your territory will extend from the desert of Lebanon, desert to Lebanon, and from there, from the great river, the Euphrates, all the Hittite country. Now, if you think today, the Euphrates is in Iraq. So this is bigger than what we think of Israel today.
This is, this is the land that God has promised, to the Mediterranean Sea, to the west. So it's bigger than what we look at, if we look at today's world. No one will be able to stand against you, all the days of your life, as I, as I was with Moses, so I will be with you. I will never leave you, nor forsake you. Be strong and courageous, because you will lead these people to inherit the land I swore to their ancestors to give to them. Think about this, God is telling Joshua, I will never forsake you, I will never leave you. For a sign of trouble, what is, you will see what Joshua does. In fact, but he forgets, and in fact, and it's, it's the same thing for us, we forget in our journey, God is with us, if we're walking with God, God is there with us, when things get in trouble, sometimes we question. Be strong and very courageous, be careful to obey all the law my service Moses, Moses gave you. Do not run from it, from it, from it to the right or to the left, that you may be successful wherever you go. Keep the book of the law always on your lips. Meditate on it day and night, so you may be careful to do everything written in it. Then you will prosper and six, and be successful. Again, as we began in this journey, if you read, you saw, if they went, did what God asked, God is right there with them. Be strong and courageous, do not be afraid, do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go. So Joseph, Joshua ordered the officers, the people, go through the camp and tell the people, get your provisions ready. So there they are on the plains of, of Jericho, three days from now, we'll cross the Jordan here and go take possession of the land. Remember, God has given to it, to them, now they gotta possess it, they gotta go take it. And then when we, we get into the fact, the Reubenites, the Gadotites, and all the other ones, remember the command that Moses, the servant of the Lord, gave you after he said, "The Lord your God will give you rest by giving you this land." So this is where we're beginning, they're getting ready to go in. And we, and remember, so God is giving this land to that, that may, they go back and occupy the land. So that, and then, then they answered Joshua, "Whatever you have commanded us, we will do, and wherever you send us, we will go." The people have been questioning, "Just as we fully obey Moses, so we will obey you. Only may the Lord your God be with you, as he has with Moses. Whoever rebels against your word and does not obey it, whatever you may command them, will be put to death. Only be strong and courageous." Remember that command again, here, the fact, whatever you command them, whoever, whoever does not obey it, will be put to death. And we will see that. So they're sending the spies in, they gotta send, you know, if any good military person will tell you, well, you're not gonna just go walk across and, and go and show up, about at least having some idea where you're going, what the, get the lay of the land and know when you, you're bringing your forces in, where you can hide, where you can go this way, all the different things, and you really wanna be able to go into the city and see where, what you're about to capture, what you're about to do. So Joshua secretly sent two spies into the city, go look over the land, he said, especially Jericho. So that they went and entered the, they went into the city, and where did they go? They entered the house of a prostitute named Rahab, and stayed there. Well, if you're into, enter into the city, where do you wanna go? You think the prostitute has the best knowledge? She knows everything, 'cause you know, everybody comes, everybody, well, she come, everybody comes to her, or her, those working for her, et cetera. So she would, she, she knows all the dirt, you know, she doesn't know the positive things, she knows all the dirt of society. And the king of Jericho was told, "Look, some of the Israelites have come here tonight to spy out the land." So the king of Jericho sent this message to Rahab. Or he shows you, if the king knows her, everybody knows her, and she knows everybody. And then, "Bring out the men who came to you and entered your house, because they have come to spy out the whole land." But the woman had taken the two men and hidden them. Why would she have hidden them? What do the people of Jericho already know? First, they're on a plane, they're on a, they're, they're overlooking the plane, and we're gonna jump, I'll jump down here real quick and bring you to that. This is the plain of Jericho. Jericho is ra, is a, is on a, not like a hilltop, a little bit of a mound, it's raised up off the ground. It's, it's on a rise above, looking down. From Jericho to the Jordan River, it's two and a half miles. From the Jordan River to where the Israelites are sitting and camping, it's two and a half miles. You think they could camouflage two and a half million people, one, two million people? They know they're coming. They know, they've known for forty years that they're coming this direction. And they know everything about what God has done. So that's what we, that, that, they know about what's took in, taking place, et cetera, so. So, and so Rahab already knows this. So we're gonna, so you look at that, you're gonna see, think about it, I had, in previous classes, I had talked to you about how tall Mount Hermona was, it's about nine thousand some odd feet, and then what level, apologize, we just lost our connection for a second. So we're back to Rahab. So she responds to the, those who come to check on her, the, the soldiers that had shown up. She says, "Yes, the men came to me, but I did not know where they had come from. At dusk, when it was time to close the city gate, they left. I don't know which way they went. Go after them quickly. You may catch up to them." But she already taken to the roof and hidden them under the stalks of flax. So the men, they fled, the, the men left, and they went to pursue the spies in the road that leads to the, to the forest of the Jordan. And as soon as the pursuers had gone out, the gate was shut. And this is where we know, this is what Rahab wants, and she already knows. She says, "Before the spies lay down for the night, she went up to the roof and said to them, 'I know that the Lord has given you this land, and that a great fear of you has fallen on us.'" They are very aware of that. "So that all who live in this country are melting in fear because of you. We have heard how the Lord dried up the water of the Red Sea. For when you came out of Egypt and what you did to Saan and Og," remember, they took over those two cities and they destroyed everyone in it, "the two kings of the Amorites east of the Jordan. Wouldn't you be afraid if you'd heard all these stories and known? They know that God is, their God is great, and their God is with them. When we heard of it, our hearts melted in fear, and everyone's courage failed because of you. For the Lord your God is a God of heaven above and earth, on earth below." And this is what she asked for, "Now then, please swear to me, by the Lord, that you will show kindness to my family, because I have shown kindness to you. Give me a sure sign that you will spare the lives of my father and mother, my brothers and sisters, and all who belong to them, for that you will save us from death. They know what took and sittin' on in Og, that everyone was destroyed, everything was killed, our lives for your lives." And the men assured her, "If you don't tell what we are doing, we will treat you kindly and faithfully when the Lord gives us the land." So she let them down by a rope to the window of the house she lived in as part of the city wall. She said to them, "Go to the hills of the pursuers, so the pursuers will not find you. Hide yourselves there for three days until they return, then go your way." Her living quarters, her home, is built into the wall of the city, and out, and within that wall is a window that looks out, so she's hanging a red cord in that window, so when they attack and come forward, they will know exactly where she is located at, to be able, be a protector, and where she is. And this, the men will tell her, "This oath you have made us swear to will not, will not be binding on us unless, when we enter the land, you have tied this scarlet cord in the window through which you let us down. And unless you have brought it, have brought your father and mother, your brothers and sisters, your whole family here, if any of them go outside your house into the street, their blood will be on their own heads. We will not be responsible. As for those who are in, are in the house with you, your blood will be on our head if we, if a hand is laid on them." Again, we will begin to see, when they make a, a covenant, a pact, a treaty, they hold true to it. As Jesus says, "Let your yes be your yes, and your no be your no." If you say you're gonna do it, do it, and honor what you say. But if you tell, "What we are doing, we will be released from the oath you, you made us swear." And so she agreed, she replied, "Let it be, let it be so." So she sent them on their way. And when they went, they went and stayed three days in the hillside, and they went back to camp finally, after they saw the men leave. They said, and they re-wired back in camp, and they said to Joshua, "The Lord has surely given us the whole land into our hands, all the people are melting in fear because of us." So, and she, so that's what we, we think of. Now they gotta get across the, the River Jordan. So, and that's what you wanna think about, you, we, we read in this, and you will see, what time of year is this? This is the Passover season, which is in the spring. What happens, if you're, you're in the Appalachian Mountains, and you're in the, the Rocky Mountains, et cetera, what happens? If there's snow on top of it, what's it do in the springtime, it starts, begins to melt? And you know, the, the Colorado swells up with water, because of Rocky Mountains water, it's, it's coming off the mountain. So that's what we want, you think about, this is what the time of year is. So they, they give the orders, et cetera, after three days, the officers went throughout the camp, giving orders to people. "When you see the ark of the covenant of the Lord, your God, and the Levitical priests carrying it, you are to move out from your positions and follow it." Remember, they're, they're organized by, by clan, et cetera, families, et cetera. They also have, they have marching, they have flags, et cetera, marching which clan they belong to, all those things, so they're very well organized. And there's roughly six hundred thousand men, they're gonna come out of this camp and head towards the River Jordan. You can't hide six hundred thousand men, that's a lot. Then you will know which way, you're gonna move from the positions, and you'll know which way to go. "But keep a distance of about two thousand cubics between you and the ark, do not go near it." So they're giving very specific orders, again. Joshua told the people, "Consecrate yourselves, for tomorrow the Lord will do amazing things among you." And Joshua said to the priests, "Take up the ark of the covenant and pass on ahead of the people." So they took it up and went ahead of them. And the Lord said to Joshua, "Today I'll begin to exalt you in the eyes of Israel. Tell the priests to carry the ark of the covenant. When you reach the edge of the Jordan's water, go and stand in the river." We don't see Charlton Heston doing this. We don't see anybody else in the, we talk biblical story, et cetera, but they carry the ark. And they, you know, and the people, as they get to the water, they're only two and a half miles away. Where are the people of Jericho? They're looking. They're shaking their boots, everybody who has windows to the walls, et cetera, are seeing. I'm sure the whole ham, families are clustered up, "What do you see, what do you see? Ah, you wouldn't believe how people are coming, you wouldn't believe how people are coming." All the archers are up on the walls, and he has, and he sees them coming, et cetera. And then they see them come to here and listen to the words of the Lord of God, this is how you will know that God is among you. And so it goes on, and the fact, and they step their foot in the water. And the flowing, and the waters flowing downstream will be cut off and stand up in a heap. This is flood stage. The water is moving fast. Today, if you went to Israel and Jordan, you would come to the River Jordan in this part of the country, and there's a dam up by Galilee, stopping the water, the flow of water from going on down to Dead Sea. That's why the Dead Sea is drying up now. Dead Sea is drying up more and more. At this time, the Dead Sea is filled, it's bigger, probably ten times bigger than it is right now. We, and archaeologists, archaeologists have found mosaics, et cetera, in the Dead Sea area showing fish being in the Dead Sea, so the, the water is so, so salty now that nothing can live within the alt, water now. But it was a little bit less salty at that time, when, when, when this was all taking place. So they're coming to here, within the map, you see the red arrows up in the middle of the map. It's giving you idea that there's, there are some that will say this was a earthquake that took place, or is this God's hand? And it's God's hand, that water is just piling straight up, straight up. And you, what do you, the people of Jericho are looking, as they see the water dry up, the water quit, is no longer there, and they see six hundred thousand men with this golden ark in front, that's flashing, and the light shining on it, et cetera, coming towards them. And I want you, want you to think about it. That's weird. My picture shows it, but that picture doesn't show it. If you remember, Mount Hermona is nine thousand two hundred and twelve feet, it's in your handout. The Sea of Galilee is negative six hundred eighty-six feet, and Sea, Dead Sea is twelve hundred and eighty-six feet below sea level. So it's coming from a height of ten thousand, almost a twelve thousand feet drop in a very short time, that's how fast the water is, that's coming off. So they broke the camp, and now the Jordan was at flood stage, and we see them walk across it. They come across that, and we, we know that it goes, and it piled up in a heap, a great distance away in a town called Adom, in the vicinity of Zer, Zerethen. While the water's flowing down, it all went away. The priests who carried the ark across stopped in the middle of the Jordan, stood on dry ground, while the Israel passed by, while the whole nation had completed the crossing to the, on dry ground. So that's not only just the six hundred thousand leading, there's another one point four million following. So I have artist rendition of what it looked like. Imagine them, these four priests carrying that, and all that, everybody's behind them, the flags, et cetera. And throughout this whole thing, the people of Jericho are, are watching. They're on a rise, they can see down. On this wall, this gives you an idea of what it is, and you, we see the ramp, rampant, the lower wall, the upper wall, the revetment wall. There's also a ditch going around the city, there'd be a main gate. You entered and exited to the main gate. Now this revetment wall is very important to understand, from, you know, the revetment wall is the base, that's your base of your, of your, of your walls. And that's upon that is built a major wall that goes up above, so that's what we'll talk about. So now the gates of Jericho were securely barred because the Israel, because the Israelites, no one went in or went out. And God says to Joshua, "See, I have delivered Jericho into your hands, along with its kings and its fighting men." He tells him to march around the city once while, with all the armed men. March around it one time, turn away, and stop. Do this for six days. Each time, march around it, turn away. Have seven priests carrying trumpets and rams, rams, horns in front of the ark. So they're carrying it around, and the seventh day, march around the city seven times, with the priests blowing the trumpets. When you hear them sound a long blast of the, on the trumpets, have the whole army give a loud shout, then the wall of city will collapse. So for six days, they're doing this. If you lived in this city, well, day one, you're probably not, you're not gonna get up to the outside walls, would you? 'Cause you see all the archers are up there, you think the king got his all his men up there, you're not gonna worry about it. Well, they're, they're marching around, and they, they come right to that, and then, 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 the archers are all ready, they got the, they got boiling oil, and they got everything ready. So they charge in, they're gonna, they're gonna put, pour oil on them, they're gonna shoot arrows at them, they're gonna kill as many as they possibly can. But the Israelite army turns and goes away. Well, day two, they do it again. Curiosity is gonna start, in town, you're gonna start going, "Well, I'm gonna see you. Did you hear what they're doing?" And they did it, and they're gonna say, "They did it again." Third day, did it again. Fourth day, did it again. Fifth day, the whole city's there, right? Everybody's going to go watch, let's go watch with it, we don't understand what they're doing. They're just marching around our city, not doing anything. Sixth day. Then the seventh day, they see these men march around it and blowing their horns, marching around it, blowing their horns. And they get to the final turn, pass it round, they turn, and they, large whooping war cry. Everybody on that, on those walls is going to turn and push away and go away. Why is that important? I want you to think about, we hear this story all the time. We think about the city of Jericho, the walls came tumbling down. What kind of walls are they? The city of Dan is what people, many think turn to, et cetera, the city of Dan, these are the walls, or some of the walls around them, they're still there today. These walls will be as high as twenty-three feet. Some of the stones in this walls are the size of cars, or bigger. The wall is as thick as our stage. That's how thick the wall is. That wall's not coming down. The Israelite army can take all the battering rams they want, et cetera, the only way they have in is through the gate. But Jericho's walls are not made the same. I was blessed to be there, I've been there with archaeologists, and some of the archaeologists who actually worked on that dig before. So they showed us like the revetment wall, this is the revetment wall, this is the base of the wall, so you can see how, how big that, well, I gotta show you the picture of it. So you see that, that base wall is not as thick as, it's not twenty, it's not as thick and wide as our, as our altar space. It's a thick wall, it's probably about fifteen, twenty, fifteen, 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 twenty feet more, at points, all the way through. But what they have been discovering, and, and, and all the archaeologists there, they have never found any large wall, stones, that would've been placed on top of it. Now, some will say, "Well, well, over time, people went into the city and they took all those stones and brought them someplace else to build something." That's a lot of stone. What they did find at the base of the walls are clay bricks. Now archaeology, one of the things they learn from, you learn from, is going by and looking into areas, seeing how things are built. Well, King Herod would later build a palace. These are some of the walls to King Herod on his palace, clay bricks. So you build a clay brick wall, and you're gonna build it twenty feet or more height, in which the archers are gonna stand on, et cetera. Well, they're designed for the soldiers to be up there, not for the whole population of the city. And this is what we have come to understand. The people were up there, when they heard, when they, when that last time turned around, they heard the blowing, the final, final blowing of the horns, the whoop cry, and that, they watched the whole army turn, and it turned, pulling their spears, their archers, their own archers, everything else, battering ram, everything else, turning towards the city and starting to charge, what are the people gonna do? They're turning away from, and that, just the force of their movement, the walls are gonna begin to crumble. And how we know some of that, that walls, that, these are the, this is the walls on the side, on the east side of the building, on the, on the side in which Rahab would've been, had, had her home. This is the poor part of the city, where Rahab would've been, and this is where her, her, her window would've been on this kind of wall, and some of those walls still remain today. So that's what we see, that, those, this is, this is how it all, this is how it all took place. 'Cause that's when they heard that, on the seventh, devin' day, they got up and marched us seven times. They're watching those people go around, they're, you know, that seventh, each day they've been doing one time. Seventh day, they did it seven times. By each, by the seventh time, you have the whole city there. And when they turn around and shout, "The Lord has given you the city," that's when it came crashing down. "The city and all that was in it are devoted, are to be devoted to the Lord. Only Rahab the prostitute and all who are with her in the house shall be spared, because she hid the spies we sent. But keep away from the devoted things." The soldiers are being challenged to go in, and they're, they're going in, and what do soldiers go for, they go for, uh, they go, they go, they wanna be recognized for the, what they're doing, et cetera, and they want, so it's, it's being, those things they're going for. They wanna, bounty is booty is what you always, how you make money and everything else, but keep away from those devoted things, so you not bring about your own destruction by taking any of them. Otherwise, you will make the camp of Israel liable to the destruction and bring trouble on it. "All the silver and gold, and the articles of bronze and iron are sacred, so the Lord must go to his tre, into the treasury." So all that, anything that goes into the treasury. "The trumpet sounded, the army shouted, and the sound of the trumpet, when the men gave a loud shout, the wall collapsed. So everyone charged straight in and took the city, devoted, they devoted the city to the Lord and destroyed with the sword every living thing in it, men and women, young and old, cattle, sheep, and donkeys." I just wanna say, it shows you a little bit what the, the walls would've come tumbling down, and they were able to go straight right in, through multiple points through the walls, get right into the city, and take it. Joshua said to the two men who had spied out the land, "Go into the prostitute's house and bring her out, and all who belong to her, in accordance with the oath to her." So the young men had gone, had done the spying, went in and brought out Rahab, her father, mother, brothers and sisters. They brought out the entire family and put them in place outside the camp of Israel. Then they burned the whole city and everything in it. "But they put the silver and gold, and articles of bronze and iron into the treasury of the Lord's house." But they put the silver and gold and articles of bronze and iron into the treasury of the Lord's house. And Joshua separated Rahab, the prostitute with her family. We will meet Rahab again later in the journey. She will come back. We have that, those bad apples keep reappearing. But she comes back. At the time Joshua pronounced pronounced his solemn oath, cursed before the Lord is the one who undertakes to rebuild this city. Jericho, at the cost of his firstborn son, he will lay its foundations. At the cost of his youngest, he will set up the, he will set up its gates. So the Lord was with Joshua and his fame spread throughout the land. Ahab and first kings and kings is gonna rebuild the city. The architect is gonna rebuild the city is sent there to rebuild the city. He begins to rebuild, his youngest son will die. He puts the gates up, his second son will die. And this is about over four hundred years later. This is about fourteen forty six and King David, when this is all taking place is about ten fifty seven, ten, not fifty seven, I got that wrong. Round and round that route, it's about four hundred years later is when it takes place. So this is when it, so that's what happens. Is there evidence of the archaeological record that affirms the biblical record? Well, I've already showed you about the walls. Once you, if you take a look at it one way, you will hear many stories and people talk about one of those large boulders they all carried away, et cetera. We had multiple theologians and church history professors with us and archaeologists with us from different universities of different denominations. And they all could agree and say, this is more like what happened than what the stories that have been told by others. This is how it could turn down. But how would they know and prove and be able to say, well, yes, it really took place? What would be a sign? What did they do to the city? They burned it, right? So you're digging archaeology, you're digging down to the layer in which you're gonna find the city. That was at that time, cause it was rebuilt ultimately. And there, I copied that there's two excavations, nineteen thirties to fifties, found storage yards filled with burnt grain. They're still finding storage jars and burnt grain. At that, at that record. When you dig and do an archaeological dig, and I'll show you at some point, I'll bring in on slides and show you an archaeological dig. In which we were digging a Hellenistic house on a tell outside of Jordan. And this is the one tell that has taught us more about how people live, lived, which helps us reinterpret the Bible. Cause you had to understand how they lived and worked and how their lives went on a daily life. You began to understand the people. And we also understand the biblical story. You dig down each way, you're able to date it. And this is all dated at the time of Jericho. So this is a wonderful thing to be thinking about. And that's what we're, there's archaeology teams trying to prove things. And this is one place that we felt we really feel like this is more proof than it ever. We get into chapter seven and what were they supposed to not do? Take things, right? But the Israelites were unfaithful in regard to the devoted things. Is that not new? Achan, son of Carmi and the son of Zimri, the son of Zerah, the tribe of Judah, took some of the, took some of them. So the Lord's anger burned against Israel. Well, Joshua has no idea, so he sends men after Jericho to Ai, which is near Beth Abin to the east of Bethel. That's right up the road. You can, you can almost see it from Jericho where they're heading to. And the people in Ai have seen and witnessed, they sent people out to watch, et cetera. Know what's coming up, go out and spy out their region. So the men went up and spied out Ai. When they returned to Joshua, he said, oh, this is, this is a piece of cake. Not all the army will have to go against Ai. Send, send two or three thousand men to take it. And do not, not be, do not weary the whole, the whole army for only a few people live there. So about three thousand went up and but when they, when they got there, they, they attacked. And they got turned around, they got routed back. And men of Ai turned out, came after and killed about thirty six of them. They were just, these, there shouldn't be enough people under, they came out and destroyed, they just drove off the Israelites. They chased them from the city gates as far as the stone quarries and struck them down to the slopes of this. This, the heart of the people melted in fear because became like water. They were no longer fearful. They, we, we built, we beat them. We beat them. And when they came back and tell them Joshua tore his clothes and fell face down to the ground. He's mourning what took place. For the ark of the Lord remained there till evening. The elders of Israel did not, did the same sprinkle dust on their heads. And Joshua said, alas sovereign Lord, why did you ever bring the people across the Jordan river to deliver us in the hands of the Amorites to destroy us? What did God tell you? If you do what I say, I'll be with you. What is, and here they are, the first time of trouble? Do not fear, the first time of trouble. Joshua was fearing, if only you've been content to stay on the other side of the Jordan. Pardon your servant Lord, what can I say now that Israel has been routed by its enemies? The Canaanites and other people of their country will hear about it, hear about this and they will be, and they will surround us and wipe us, wipe out our name from the earth. What then will you do for your own great name? Putting it back on God, you know, you let this happen. Then God comes back, but the Lord says, stand up. What are you doing down there on your face? Israel has sinned. They have violated my covenant, which I commanded them to keep. They have taken some of the devoted things they have stolen. They have lied. They have put them with their own possessions. That is why the Israelites cannot stand against their enemies. They turn their backs on and run because they have been made liable to destruction. I will not be with you anymore unless you destroy whatever among you is devoted to that destruction. So by this time you think how mad is Joshua is. He says, what? This has happened. Go consecrate the people. Tell them to consecrate yourself in preparation for tomorrow. For that is what the Lord, the God of Israel says, that they are devoted things among you, Israel, you cannot stand against your enemies until you remove them. On the morning, he brings them all forward by tribe by tribe, the Lord chooses, shall, each Lord chooses. The tribe the Lord chooses shall come forward clan by clan. What clan, what tribe is he gonna choose? Judah. Whoever's caught with devoted things shall be destroyed by fire along with all that belongs to him. He has violated the covenant of the Lord and has done an outrageous thing in Israel. So early in the morning, they come up tribe by tribe and who's God gonna call out? Judah. And he starts calling the clans's out. Came forward, the Zerarites who were chosen, he had, he had the Zerarites come forward, cause God already knows. And the Zimri was chosen, Joshua has family, he had the Zerarites and families and Zimri was chosen. Joshua and his families come forward, man by man, and Achan, son of Camp Carmi, the son of Zimri, the son of Zerai, of the tribe of Judah was chosen. And Joshua said to Achan, my son, give glory to the Lord, the God of Israel and honor him. Tell me what you have done, do not hide it from me. God knows. Achan replied, it's true. I have sinned against the Lord, the God of Israel. This is what I have done when I saw in the plunder a beautiful robe from Babylonia. Two hundred shekels of silver and a bar of gold weigh fifty shekels. I coveted them and took them. They're here hidden in the ground inside my tent with the silver underneath. So Joshua sends messengers and they ran to the tent and there was hidden in this tent and the silver and all that. They took the things from the tent, brought them to Joshua and all the Israelites spread them out before the Lord. Then Joshua, together with Israel, took Achan, son of Zerai, and the silver, the robe, the gold bar, his sons, his daughters, his cattle, his donkey, his sheep, his tent. And all that he had done, the Valley of Acor. Why would he take everything? Where was his, where was his sons and daughters? Where was his wife? Could he, could he dig up the inside of the tent and then not know? Oh, you step out. Why, why, what'd you do in here? The floor is all dug up, right? So they know. They're just as culpable as he is. Then all Israelites stoned him after they had stoned him and stoned him and after that they had stoned the rest, they burned them. Over Achan they heaped up a large pile of rocks, which remains to this day. Then the Lord turned from this, his fierce anger and therefore, turned from his fear, his fierce anger. Therefore that place has been called the Valley of Acor ever since. So everything he had, everything he owned would have been stoned and put to death. Does, has this taken place since? As a former army officer, commander of two hundred thirty eight soldiers. I always just want to get my UCMJ manual out and say, well, I wish they give summary court execution authority back to us. We used to have it. In World War Two, we had it. If a man deserted from his post, if you were assigned to guard duty and you were at the post. And you were there and you're at guard duty and you fell asleep or you, or you left. You had just put everybody in your unit at risk. You could have killed them all. Achan had killed thirty six people died because of him, for what he did. It used to be you brought them up front and you had summary court execution authority. And they, they fired, they firing squad would put them to death. Civil war was very common for that to take place. War after war after this time, that we'll see that over and over again. Today we don't do that. We send them to Leavenworth. So we, that, we are, we're a more kinder, gentler military. We don't do that. But it is what took place and it's, you know, it's something you don't, God could not let that happen. Joshua would not, whatever, you make it, they made an example. You think anybody's, you think any wife's gonna let their husband show up with a bunch of booty and try to, I'm like, what could I got? I'm gonna bury it. You're not getting in my tent, you're getting, you know, they're gonna, I mean, go tell Joshua what you have done. I mean, you know, they're not gonna let that happen. But they're gonna continue on to Ai. And the Lord says, do not be afraid, do not be discouraged. Take the whole army with you and go up and attack Ai. For I delivered into your hands and the king of Ai, his people, the city and the land, you shall do it that Ai, as the king did to Jericho and his king. Except that you may carry, carry off the plunder and livestock for yourselves, set an ambush behind the city. Men fight for glory. Military, we join the military, men and women through the military for honor. Where we are there for the, we are there to take, we're doing it for our country. Some people, this time you did a lot of your fighting, et cetera, for the, for the boot, for the bounty. That's how you got paid. That's how you, that. This gives you an eye, this is Ai they're going to. You can already see how smaller it is. And how they know that, they, this is, this is, they're doing a dig right now. That they think they have found the city and they can tell roughly by the walls, et cetera, they have measured out, et cetera, and all the soundings, et cetera. Come up with a footprint of what Ai should be. And there's, and they're beginning to find the buildings with inside of it, at least the bases of them, et cetera, be able to find them. So that's where they're going. They're going, so it's a much smaller city, et cetera. So Joshua and the whole army moved out to attack Ai. He chose thirty, thirty thousand of his best fighting men and sent them out at night with these orders. Listen carefully, you're set an ambush behind the city. Don't go very far from it. All, all, all of you will be on alert and I and all those with me will be, will advance on the city. And when the men come out against it, against us, as they did before, we will flee from them. They will pursue us until we have lured them away from the city. For they will say, they are running away from us as they did before. So when we flee from them, you are to rise up and ambush and take the city. The Lord your God will give it into your hands when you have taken the city, set it on fire, do what the Lord has commanded. See to it, you have, you have your orders. So this is a very smart tactical move. They're gonna send them, he sent thirty thousand men up behind where they can't, they're gonna have them go at night where they cannot see in the city and they know that they're doing. They're gonna go up and be behind it. So the next day when they get up and they begin that, so they, they were sent off, next morning, he mustered his army. He and the leaders of Israel marched before them. So they're marching up and of course, what are the people, the, the, the military and Ai, they're, they're up on the, up there looking with their archers, et cetera, going. Oh, they're coming back again. We will show them. So they can, they say, they see them again that their entire force. So they, they're coming up against this, this city and so they, next morning, they marched before them, Ai, the entire force that was with them. And marched up and approached the city and arrived at the front of it. They set up camp north of Ai. So they had, so they're seeing them at that. And so Joshua taken about five thousand men and set them in ambush between the Bethel, the west of the city. So the soldiers took up the positions and they went up and attacked. And the king Veasal, he sent his men out. All the men in the city fled, came out. We're gonna get them, we're gonna wipe them off the face of the earth. And they go out running after them, attacking them. Attack and the Israelites are running away from them. So they're running down the hill, they're chasing them, shooting arrows, doing everything else, trying to catch them. And they all, all the men of Ai, that, so then the thirty thousand men turn around and come up and attack the front of the city, go right to the gate. The gate's doors left wide open. Cause they'd have to leave the gate wide open to leave. So here they, the, the, the big, the big wooden doors closed, et cetera. So now they just, they just go right on in. And so they're, that, they set the city on fire. The men are pursuing them. And what is taking, you know, at some point Joshua stops. So Joshua held out the city, the javelin that was in his hand, as soon as he did this, the men in the ambush rose quickly from that position. Rushed forward, they entered the city, captured it. The men of Ai looked back and saw the smoke of the city rising in the sky. So they're gonna turn around and start running backwards away from the Israelite forces. Back to see if they can recapture and take, to go defend their city. And with the men in the city, and remember he sent thirty, he sent thirty thousand over there. So now they're being, they're got the what's inside the city. But the other soldiers are now, they're now in a pincher move, they're between and they're gonna be caught in between, they'll be captured. So the ambush taking the city, smoke was going, went in, and so they caught, caught in between the middle on both sides. Israel cut them down, leaving them neither survivors, no fugitives. But then they took the king of Ai alive and brought him to Joshua. When Israel had finished killing all the men of Ai in the fields and in the wilderness where they had chased them and where, where every one of them had been put to the sword. All the Israelites returned to Ai and killed those who were in it. So twelve thousand men and women fell that day. So that's how we see much smaller that city was, all the people of Ai. And Joshua did not draw back the hand that held, held out his javelin until he had destroyed all who had lived in it. So he's holding that javelin up just as Moses held up the staff, right? God is with them. God is with them. And it didn't, but, but Israel did not carry off for themselves the livestock. But then they, they did carry off the livestock and plunder the city as the Lord had instructed. So they were able to, all the men were able to take the livestock and the plunder within the city and take it home with them. So Joshua burned the city, destroyed it, et cetera. That's what the archaeologists are digging, trying to find and look at it. He ordered them to take the body from the pole. He impaled the body of the king of Ai on a pole and left it there until evening. At sunset Joshua ordered them to take the body from the pole and throw it down in the entrance of the city gate. And they raised a large pile of rocks over it where it remains to this day. This is very brutal when we think about it. Warfare then is very brutal. And the fact, and that's so, it's, and that's, you know, we, we sometimes wonder, how can God be this way? But remember, God said, everything east of the Jordan, the Canaanite territory is beaten. Because they are worshiping other gods to including sacrificing their children. Wipe them from the face of the earth. He says, we cannot let that kind of, you know, God did not want that kind of worship to continue. That kind of, that kind of people having that alliance to that kind of thing. So that's, we think, wait then. So we're getting to the end of eight and the fact the covenant is renewed at Mount Elba. So that is all taking place. We see the covenant be restored or would be renewed. He built according what is there, the book of the law of Moses on altar, on cut stones. Joshua wrote this, you know, wrote a copy of the law of Moses, all the Israelites and elders and officials and judges. Were standing on both sides of the ark of the covenant, facing the Levitical priests who carried it. So they're all right there. Both the foreigners living among them, remember this is the aliens. And the aliens have the same rights as the Israelites. They are living with them and they are protected by their, their same laws, ruled the same way, cared for the same way, et cetera. They're not strangers. They're that. "Half the people stood in front of the Mount Ger- Gerizem and half of them in front of Mount Elba, as Moses, the servant of the Lord, had formerly commanded, when he gave instructions to bless the people of Israel." And Joshua read the words of the law, blessing and curses. Remember this? Six hundred and thirteen. Three hundred and sixty-five, thou shalt nots, two hundred and forty-eight, thou shalt do's. We come to the end of the night. Joshua has led them into the promised land. They are there. They're beginning, they're gonna go from here and begin the trek up, and some of the maps I have laid in within your packet, show you the next journeys, they continue on. They're gonna go forward. There are more battles to take control, and actually the rest of part of, part of, what you're, in the latter section of this is just almost a list of one battle after another, after another. We're not gonna go into detail on any of those. But we're gonna talk about the things that took place. The land will be divided among the tribes at the very end. God is, Joshua's gonna divide it. And I've given you some, some of the maps of that before, showing you what, how that territory's gonna be given out. We're gonna also want you to think about, uh, who's giving Canaan, the Canaan, the land of Canaan. I think the, the tribe of Gad, I think, has received that, and they're not gonna be able to take it. So we're gonna, we'll get them later and we'll talk about that. And so they will, they will occupy other areas. At the very end, Joshua's gonna share his final word, words. Now, in that story you've already read, or you're getting ready to read, if you haven't read it, there's something very unique is gonna take place. In the midst of all that, for us to understand, when Joshua gives his word, that we're, it is what we see, when they told Rahab, "If you do what we, if you do what we told you to do, we will honor this." Again, let your yes be your yes. If you give your word and make a treaty or whatever it may be, you will see the Israelites will uphold it, which I think is an amazing thing, that they honor what they say. So what are they gonna do as the future unfolds? That's what we're gonna continue to learn. As we figure, as we, we see them settle and take the land. With that, let's say a prayer. Dear heavenly Father, you have been with us tonight and each and every night, we've got together and each and every day as we read. Lord, open our eyes, as we said, to read, to sometimes slow down and think about. Just as they marched around Jericho, to unbundle it. To think about what is really taking place and how amazing and how, what you have done with them and how they, that you were present with them. And that you can see what we cannot see. Lord, guide us as we learn more. Lead us down the path you call us to go. Lord, we ask all this to your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.